Kim put together, of course, Kim's, well, both of them are in the minutes tonight.
Yeah.
The comments that they put, it, I reckon it's the first time we've ever had a full comments about what happened during that. While it is an expensive proposition, it's something that is also educational. You get to meet some people unless you wouldn't meet otherwise. So, I commend the ones that went in and the feedback that you gave.
Well, I read it, and I was hoping that William was going to be here tonight, and I understand he had to work. But there's a lot that goes on at electric cities, and there's a lot that's never been brought back to us. It's just like the Kempa thing, as far as, I was hoping he would touch base on that. I read it in his notes. I know Max has asked about it, as far as 2024 coming up, and that's the year that, to start off with, we were going to get all this money back, and that's not happening. That doesn't happen in 2024, and I think, what is it in 20?
Rider eight falls off in 24, so we lose a debt, which is about $24,000 a month on our Kempa bill.
Mm-hmm. And then-
2025 is the date, December 31st, 2025.
What is the, what is the date on, uh, us, what is it, 2040?
I read it was 2040 something, 42 or 44.
Uh-huh.
I'll have to pull up that email, but yeah, 2040, around that timeframe, was when our actual contract is up.
Yeah.
There's a lot of explaining that has to be done with that date. That date is not something that's-
Yeah, well, I hope we're all around, but we won't be sitting up here during that date. But it, it's nice to know when you're throwing figures out, and I'd heard before that, oh, 2024, 2025, uh, we were going to end up getting millions of dollars back and, and that.
Not millions, but some money.
Yeah, well-
On a per capita basis.
We get it back because we will not have to pay them, right? Okay.
And there's money that will be divided.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's- Go ahead.
No, 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 go.
So, are you saying that we'll get money back by not paying them, and we get money back from, for that money, right?
Yes. Now, one thing that could keep that from happening is this due power proposal that's paid to the legislature, the legislature has ordered, and Duke Powers now presenting the information to, to, to the governor to see if it meets the criteria. But some of that money could wind up going to, to get those figures down to where everybody's trying to do it. There's going to be a big war like that when it happens. So, that's, that's a little bit down the road.
Um-
Anything else on that?
Yeah, let me, let me, let me. The conference was really good. It was a lot of, most of the camp town council members were there, all of them, and their mayor. Was that the, is that right, Ms. Pickett?
Yes, ma'am.
So, they had, like, 95% attendance. There was a lot of stuff brought forth in the meeting that we didn't know anything about. William and I, I, we didn't know anything, I didn't know what we were talking about. I'm going to be honest with you. So, we're missing something, some way, and I don't know who's responsible for that information, but we're not getting it.
So, what they rolled out in the Electric Cities Conference was their strategic plan for public power. That was a rollout for everybody. None of us had seen that. But their board, the, the core board had gotten together and came up with this vision, the purpose, the values, and that's what they rolled out to us, and that was essentially what the entire conference was about. And so, that was what I handed out before the meeting, so you could all see. And it's broken down in both write-ups about what each one focuses on and where our, where our focus should be.
But just remember that there's two things. It's not just electric cities. We deal with electric cities in a lot of different ways. But Kempa is the power company that we deal with, that we buy power from, and they buy power from Duke, power on a contract. And there's some funny figures that are in there that decides what the rate's going to be. I think we've had one 3% increase since the debt 10 years ago. Not 10 years ago, but it's 10 years and there's five, three years left on. So, uh-
We have Kempa board meetings. I am the secondary on that seat right now. You guys are always welcome to come. I mean, I can tell y'all, they're usually on Wednesdays, they're at 10 o'clock in Wilson. You know, I can always let y'all know when they are. I know all of y'all work, so it's going to be a little bit harder for y'all to get there. But those agendas are online. I'm happy to share those with y'all anytime.
Well, I remember back when I was on the board before, we had a lot of participation when we would go to that. And the breakout meetings is where we really found out what we needed to know. We found out there what, we took Glenn one year. He went to a lineman's class, and he came back with some ideas that he was told. I knew that we were going to be short employees 10 years ago because I went to the thing that they said, here's how it is. At that time, it was CP and L, we're going to hire everything y'all got, and we're going to be able to pay them. And it's come to pass. We had to get our salaries up for our electrical department for them to do a job. And I, I'm just saying, uh, it's, it's a good, uh, it's a good thing. I've always had a bit of a problem in some of the places that they've had them because all the places that they've had them, uh, they're not supporting electric cities. I mean, I think next year it's at Myrtle?
Mm-hmm, it's back at Myrtle Beach next year.
They have a bigger turnout when it is that close by than they do other places. But it's, it's something that, that this board needs to look at because there's a lot of things happening with Duke and, and also with the power and some of the rates. We find out what can happen. Everybody is complaining about, well, we're paying all these high rates here in Bensfield Electrical, but when you look at it and they show it across the board, it's not that much higher than, than Duke customers or some of the others. So, I mean, it's something good that this board needs to, if you don't go, it's good to have the comments come back and so we'll be ready for it.
We'll now go to the public hearing on RZ 2022-06.
Good evening, commissioners.
I will ask our attorney to, to give us the rules of the road.
Well, very briefly, and Erin will, I'm going to step on her toes, she can handle most of this. This is not quasi-judicial, so this is purely legislative. You can consider anything and everything pretty much that you want. If there, we do need to, it's always good practice that if there's any bias or reason that you feel like you can't act as an impartial arbiter and consideration of the advocates resoning, that you should disclose such things. But ex parte communications or other information that you may have about this, that's not improperly considered. When it comes to the testimony that you're going to hear, it doesn't have to be sworn. It's a legislative decision, not a quasi-judicial, so it is not with the same formality that you have with the subdivision site plan and plat review and such like, so.
So, when we call somebody to come that's in favor, they don't have to be sworn?
No, they just state their name and address for the record.
More of a traditional public hearing from your experience and not with the lacrosse examining and all of that. We don't, we don't need to do all that tonight, and everybody's probably after you.
You're, you're up.
Alrighty, thank you, Ike, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Erin.
So, this request is a general rezoning. The, it consists of four parcels. Three of the parcels are within the corporate limits, and then the larger parcel that's in question is in the ETJ. Currently, it's a roughly 26 acres, about 25.63 acres. Property is owned by Chris and May Stevenson. It's located going north on US Highway 301. It's right at the intersection of 301 North and NC Highway 242 North. Currently, one of the sites has a vehicle sales there. It's been there for decades at this point. And the two other parcels are vacant. The larger parcel, it's highlighted in the screen in red there, has been used for agricultural purposes. And one of the lots has a single-family residential unit on it. As I said, currently, the, all four sites are Zone B2, which is commercial neighborhood business, and the petitioner would like to rezone the parcels to B3 highway business. Utilities would be provided by the town. And the zoning map currently, as it stands today, is on the screen there. You see the surrounding zoning districts primarily consist of B2. You do have some residential to this, on the south boundary at West Hale Street, Zone R11, and then on the northern boundary of the larger tract, you have R6. But in that area is predominantly commercial uses. Right now, where the car lot is located, it is a legal non-conforming use. The petitioner would like to bring that lot into conformance and with the current zoning ordinance today, so it would not be a non-conforming use. Our future land use map has identified this area as suitable for commercial. It is a major thoroughfare and corridor into the town of Benson. So, in my analysis, I do believe that B3 highway business would be appropriate in this location. As I stated, this is a general rezoning, so we're looking at all of the uses that would encompass the B3 district. Some of the uses would be childcare center, nursing home, technical trade, general retail and vehicle sales. The B3 district is designed to capture a larger population of the, of the community and also provide more uses, a little more, higher intensity uses in that district. Also, in my analysis, this, the request is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan as well as the future land use map. One of the goals of our comp plan is to increase quality economic development by attracting and retaining businesses and also to bring in alignment properties that are currently non-conforming into compliance with the ordinance and the future land use map so that it aligns better for the future use of, of those properties. The impact to the adjacent property owners and the surrounding community is reasonable. It, it benefits the potential inconvenience or harm to the community. The impact to the adjacent community is reasonable because it is surrounded for commercial uses and commercial activities. The properties that are located in that area are commercial. You do have a, a gas station with convenience. You do have medical office in, on NC 242. You do have several lots that are currently zoned as commercial that have the potential to be developed. The planning board reviewed this case at its August 5th meeting, and they did recommend approval. Staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval as well for this request. I can answer any questions that you may have. Anyone wishing to speak would just need to state their name and address for the record.
Okay. We'll now call the ones that are in favor. And if someone is speaking for the applicant, then they can come forward or anybody that's in favor of RZ 2022-06. Come forward.
Well, I'm Chris Stevenson, and I just appreciate y'all considering it to get it all, you know, con, you know, conform to what it's supposed to be to start with. And I've been looking out for that corner 42 years, and as long as I'm around and my kids, when I'm gone, they're going to look after it too and make it look nice. So, I'm going to pass it on to them, it's not for sale. But I appreciate if you would consider it, thank you.
Give her your address, too.
700 West Church Street.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wants to come forward to speak in favor? Well, nobody else is coming forward in favor. Anyone that wants to come and speak against? Anyone that wants to come forward and speak against? RZ 2022-06. While no one's coming forward, we close the public hearing. And now, ask the board what questions you have and what's your wishes.
I make a motion, we approve RZ 2022-06 to B3.
I'll put the, as long as you want to reflect that you adopt the statement of consistency and that this request is consistent with the adopted goals, objectives and policies of the town. It is reasonable and in the public interest hereby granting approval. Just like that.
I approve. Just like that. She already read it.
You make a motion to-
I make a motion that we-
What the planner said.
We approved, we approved it, just like the statement reads.
Is any other question? All in favor say aye. Oppose, no. RZ 2022-06 is approved. New business, consider approval of road closure for September the 10th event.
So, I did ask Tim to stay, just in case you guys had any questions. But this event was held also last year, and he is requesting that we close the part of Railroad Street on, that his side of, his business is owned, on Saturday, September 10th, as well as the alleyway. They are going to have the Combat Veterans Motorcycle Association. They're expecting to have about 100 to 200 motorcycles that will be arriving that day at 8:00 a.m. And so, they're asking to close the street from approximately 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for the safety of the riders entering and leaving that location.
And that street is railroad?
Southwest Railroad, mm-hmm. Right in front of Fainton Goat, so from Cornerstone to Fainton Goat, and then the alley behind it.
I make a motion, we approve the road closure as requested. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Ayes, approved.
Thank you.
Consider approval of upgrade position in library from part-time to full-time, Kimberly.
Alright, so, I'm pulling up an email right here. So, Derek, as you all know, has been very busy at the library over the summer. We did lose our summer help. We had a summer intern, she was a teacher, so she has gone back to school for the summer. But we also, due to family reasons, we lost our part-time employee that was there 20 hours a week that helped specifically with programs. So, we have been looking at the potential for the library in the future. And, you know, when we had, when we met in May for our board retreat, we discussed needing a part, a full-time employee at the library. But we, we didn't approve it, we kept it like it was. That is not being able to be sustained at this time. And so, we are asking if we can hire a full-time staff member in the library. We would take the part-time position that he had and make it full-time. It would add additional monies to, to his department, to his budget. It's, it would not be budgeted for, we would have to pull it out of Fund 10, which is the general fund. And I would anticipate doing that at the end of the year because we usually have overage in sales and use tax, and we usually have overage in prior tax year. And so, we would have to move it at the end of the year in that, that full-fledged budget amendment. But some things that he sent me, so over the last seven months, their door count has steadily increased. For the first time since reopening after the pandemic, they have topped over 1,000 in June and July of this year. A full-time position would allow us to ensure that we are proving the best quality of service to our residents. They, you know, so why does it matter? For starters, you have to remember that everyone who comes inside the library needs something from a staff member at some point during their visit. So, that could be they're returning books, they're using the computer, they're asking for suggestions. You'd be surprised at how many people just come in and ask Derek just general knowledge of the town. They, they print in the library. Their circulation statistics have also been increasing. We are seeing the highest number of checkout since reopening after the pandemic. In June and July of this year, over 1,700 books were checked out each month. Now, he says, each of these books were checked out by staff of the Mary Duncan Public Library. Not to mention those also increase the workload of re-shelving the books when they are returned and keeping the shelves neat and orderly. And if y'all are aware, the library isn't, is a part of the Johnston County system. So, once a month, he's going, I mean, once a week, I'm sorry, he's going to Smithfield and doing a book run. So, they're having to pull books for other libraries to take that to Smithfield in return. He gets books, brings them back. They have to notify the, the patrons that their book's there. Then there, there's more traffic coming in because they're able to get books from the Cardinal system. As you've seen from the summer reading program, he has high expectations for our program in here at the library. And, and it is, he wants it to be known for its quality, and it is known for its quality. There are many, many kids that go to his programs there. I don't know if y'all have seen the pictures on Facebook this year, but he has, his numbers have topped out this year. And that's great, that's what we want. And it's going to continue to do that even through the school year. With an additional full-time employee, he would like to see the library offer weekly program like preschool storytime. The employee that was there, she was doing that, and the response was really good. Parents also really love the programming that they have, and they're ready for it to return in the fall. In addition, he would like to see the library more involved in the schools. And in, in the preschools in Benson, in Benson Elementary, he's taught with the principal at the elementary school, and they've discussed the idea of the library partnering with their library and so they can have, they can help reinforce, reinforce the work they are doing in the school system. I think this is a great opportunity that we should pursue. Likewise, he's been contacted by the local preschool directors in town, and they're asking for the library to offer programs for them. They desire for their kids to learn about the library and know how the library is there to support and nurture them while they're growing up. This is also a great opportunity that we should explore, and I would agree with that. I know that all of my kids went through daycare, and they all attended the library at their community, and they enjoy it thoroughly. And we used to be able to go to preschools and do reading time at preschools, but we don't have the staff to do that right now. So, Derek, it is no secret that Derek spends a lot of his time in the library. He does, he comes in a lot on the weekends and works, he works a lot at night. And he, you know, that's his passion, he loves doing that. But he is losing out some of his director work because he is, he wants to be a part of being with the patrons. By adding a full-time employee, you know, although he loves to be the face, he will be able to spend some more time at the museum, which is lacking right now because he has a part-time employee at the museum, and he gets to spend no time over there. So, he would love to be able to spend more time over there and record the town's history. And, you know, he, the older generation, we've talked about this over the years, that know a lot about the history of the town. He's not able to get connected with them right now because he doesn't have time. But before that older generation goes away, he wants to be able to get some of that time so he can get all that recorded at the museum. He is asking that the starting salary be $40,000. What was bet, what was bet? Mm-hmm, well, when she was part-time. Hold on, I've got it right here. So, the, the position that just left, she was budgeted at $19,440 in his budget. So, that would put in excess of $20,560 if he hired a full-time employee. Now, keep in mind, that's a 12-month estimation of hers, so that's, you know, she's already left, and he's been without her for a few weeks. We don't know how long it'll take to hire somebody, you got to count that in, but roughly, you're looking at $20,000. And then we would add on benefits, which benefits typically cost around $10,000 per employee. But that is our request. Derek, did I catch everything? Want to add anything?
Here, I can come up so you guys can hear me. So, one of the things I will say is, is when I lost that part-time employee, I did not realize how much I counted on them to do the programming and how much I had actually passed on to them and allowed them to take it and run with it. I was talking to Scott a couple of weeks ago, and we were talking about what it looks like moving forward. And I told him, I was like, I did not realize how much I gave over. Like, I just passed it on and let her take it and run with it because she was good at it. Now, I'm picking up the pieces, trying to assume all that back while also not dropping anything that I took on when I handed it off. So, the past two weeks has been challenging, or two weeks, three weeks? I can't remember, it was like the beginning of August at this point. So, it has been challenging trying to figure out, and, and I will say, one of the hardest things for me has been when parents are asking, hey, what's it look like for this file? What's it, what, what are you going to offer? We want this, we want to see this. And I'm having to look at them and say, I'm not sure right now. Let me have some time, let me, let me work on it. We've had some staffing changes, we're going to work through it, and we're going to figure it out. So, that's- Oh, okay.
I thought somebody said something to that.
Yeah, I did say, I was like, I didn't want to talk over anybody. So, that's pretty much like where this needs coming from because I've realized, you know, the potential we have and what we've already got started, and having that full-time position would allow us to keep that going.
Well, I can tell you, when, when you're talking about, you, you ask people, you know, what, what happens at Town Benson you like. And there's 50% of the people say, you know, the museum, the, uh, the library has a lot of people that go through, that people come there every day, they use the computers. I reckon they're still reading your papers, so they, you know, it's kind of expensive, but there's, there's really a lot goes on with kids. If we can teach them how to read while they're little bitty things, they'll learn how to read all their life. So, I think there's really a good job being done with, with that law.
And, and if the board's not ready to approve a new position or a full-time position tonight, then the alternative would be, Derek and I have talked about it, would be a reduction in hours. He's mentioned maybe just closing on Monday, and that would be a complete workday for him with, with no patrons in, in the library. And then being open Tuesday through Friday with Thursday being their late night to be open. That's the other option.
Well, I think it's really a no-brainer. I think we talked about it six months ago. I thought that's what we were working toward. I thought that's what we were working toward in all of our departments. I thought we had, had looked at a full-time position to help him.
But we pulled it out.
We didn't talk about the salaries, but we've talked about every department head that we've got. What happens if he gets a better job and there's nobody there to step up?
There's none. Agreed.
I think that we need to go with it and, and go ahead and put the word out. And we may have to cut a little somewhere else, but this is really important. I've seen more activities just since I have been on the board at the library more so than anywhere else, I would say.
I would agree.
Do you foresee any other things? Because right now, you do know we taking some out of fund balance, and if it don't pan out, then we're going to have to raise taxes next budget cycle, I think, to make up 90-something thousand.
Right.
This would be 120-something thousand now, right?
Right. But keep in mind that you guys have budgeted for a town manager position.
Right.
That you're not technically using right now. Because, I mean, I, my, but my budget for my, for me was already in there.
Right.
So you're not using, that was a third in the Fund 10.
I know, like, for next year.
For next year.
If the taxes don't pan out, we're going to have to raise, well, if we proved this tonight, instead of what, three cents it was, then it's now it's going to be four.
Potentially, but, you know, you know, you have growth coming in.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I can't predict.
I just want everybody to remember that.
Yeah, I can't predict what's going to happen in a year, but I, I'd also, you know, the library is a service to this community, and I would hate to see, I would hate to see, I hate that we can't open our doors on Saturdays like we used to, but we just don't have the staff. I would hate to see us close our doors again on, on another day during the week that potentially somebody's missing out.
I'm not saying I'm not bored, but I just want everybody to remember, you know, so they don't get caught off guard.
I understand.
And I don't have a problem with you hiring someone, but I think, and I, I'm, I'm being really sincere about this. We're going to have to start looking hard and long for some minorities in these positions. Because I'm going to tell you something, you have minorities going in that library, and I can tell you, when they go in there and they don't see anybody that looks anything like them, it makes a difference.
Well, when the.
And I, I, I want, I don't have a problem with you hiring someone. But I, I just think in the future, in the very near future, we need to start looking at more diversity as far as this place is concerned here and our places around, because we do have, and there are more and more coming in, and they're going to be looking for these types of things to see what do we have and what we don't have. So I think it's important. I do want you to have that person if you need them. But I want you to be very conscious of hiring and, and advertising. And I know they said, and I, and I've said this before, black is black. I don't care if they come from Africa, if they're black, put a "hi." I mean, that's just the way I feel about it. We might have to run some down. I don't have a problem running them down. But I know if the word gets out there, we fill these voids that was not filled one time with minorities. But we had to solicit, so I, you know, I, I want us to start looking closer at that.
Okay.
What's the wishes of the board?
I make a motion to approve.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Ayes, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consider, uh... Did you get it back on?
Yeah, it worked. Talking about the stream, Derek?
No, no, no. I'm talking about the feed went off.
Oh, yeah, it, it worked.
Okay. Consider voluntary annexation petition by 550 cash at Level C. Shannon Hill and Angie Thornton.
Okay, we, Erin received a petition for a voluntary annexation for 550 cash. The owner is Shannon Hill. This will be a non-contiguous annexation. It's 26023 acres, Weston Hills subdivision, near the intersection of North Honeycutt Road and Woodman Road. What we need tonight is just the board's approvals that you do want us to proceed with the process. It'll take some time. We have to do the investigation. We'll have to schedule a public hearing. The public hearing could be scheduled probably the first meeting in October.
Something like that.
Yeah. So tonight, we just need to get your approval that you are interested in letting us move forward to investigate the scene about the annexation.
What's the wishes of the board?
I make a motion to approve.
All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Consider voluntary annexation petition from Crosspoint Logistics Center.
Okay, and then this one is, this is another voluntary annexation, but as everyone knows, when Crosspoint, as one of their, their incentives for the tax incentive was to be annexed in, so we have received their petition. So just like with the 550 cash, we just need to have your approval to move forward.
Any questions to the board? What's your wish?
I make a motion that we approve.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
Yeah, and on both of those, the hearings will be in October, first meeting in October.
If you want to go ahead and set the dates, if you're confident in having everything ready by then, then you can. Otherwise, I mean, you can set it at a later date. You might want to give yourself a little bit, especially with Crosspoint, there's a lot more going on.
So what can you?
You can set the date and notice it and everything.
That's important, both of them. Town managers report.
We will be closed on Monday, September 5th for the Labor Day holiday. And the only other thing is, I sent out an email this week. We are doing an ADA survey. So if you guys get a chance, if you'll get on and do that for me, and then tell your constituents, it's on Facebook. They can come by Town Hall, get a paper copy if they don't want to do it online.